All right. Good afternoon. At this time, I will call the City Commission workshop, which has been duly posted and scheduled for October the 11th at 4:30 PM to order. Was there any civic communication for the workshop?
None.
Thank you. Item one, presentations from the following top three golf course architectural firms pursuant to the city's request for qualifications, number 2021-20, for the Tony Butler Golf Course Design and Project Management. Javier?
Yes, Mayor, City Commission. Before the workshop, we asked the three firms to pick a number, and so Golfscape chose number one, and so he'll do his presentation, and then he'll leave the room, and then we'll bring the next one in, and so on and so forth. So, Jeff?
Before we start, I have a question. Is this for the 18 holes or those last nine of the 27?
It's for the 18 holes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be here again. I think most of you know that I was the subconsultant to the National Golf Foundation when they did the business study that got this thing rolling, and I think that's an advantage to our firm because, you know, the step one in any design is doing a thorough evaluation of the golf course, and, well, I've already done that. And I know we want to get this thing started and grasp early enough to capture that winter Texan market next year. Like I said, I was here with the NGF. I mean, I saw their study. As you can see, Tony Butler has some very low customer satisfaction rankings. Most of it is due to the quality of the greens, which looked better yesterday when I got here, and the, well, the drainage and the irrigation. I stayed with you via phone calls and various letters and helped you set the original budget. Javier had the wisdom to bump it after three years, you know, 15%, which not all cities do. You know, they give you a low budget, and then they keep it, you know, and sometimes don't get started until five years later. So, we feel comfortable about the program. We feel comfortable that this is the path you should take, addressing your critical needs. I mean, golfers, they like green grass, they like their greens to putt well, and they like their sand bunkers, and of course, they don't like to get their expensive golf shoes wet. And again, NGF studies show that if you properly address your biggest concerns on a golf course, you get the best return on investment. So, I think you are on the right path. So, let's just take a look at what we're proposing, you know, for these top priorities. Irrigation is number one, one and one. I mean, I think we all know the system is very old, and it's just time to replace it. There's no hope for it. Now, your pump station is not as old by about five years, and we went in and examined it yesterday and today, and we're of the attitude that if we can save something and make it work and not spend money on it, we're not going to. And that your pump station's kind of a tweener, but we'll probably bid the project out for a new pump station with an alternate. We'll bring in some pump specialists, and if they can keep that pump running for 10 more years, well, then we'll save you that money and use it other important places. Your irrigation system does not look any better from the airplane view. The donut pattern here is typical of an underdesigned system, poorly designed system, and an old system that doesn't have enough pressure. This is Tierra Santa down the street in Wesaco, happens to be one of my designs, and with the irrigation, you know, designed with better coverage, coverage everywhere, and this is what we think Tony Butler deserves. So, with that, I'm going to bring in Ben McCambe of McCambe Irrigation. He's going to describe, just for a few moments, some of the more specific proposals.
As you mentioned, I'm Ben McCambe. I've been designing golf course irrigation systems for more than 20 years in Texas, Louisiana, and Arkansas, and I happen to live in Laguna Vista. I've been playing this golf course for 40 years and know it very well, and want to do what I can to make it green. That's what I do is make it green. There are two things specifically. Jeff mentioned the donut, the circles. One ways, one of the ways that we can mitigate that, the big problem we have in that regard is wind, and as you all know, it's constant. It's usually at least 10 miles an hour, and you can pretty much count on two hands the number of dead calm days we have in a year. So, instead of the normal spacing, which is called 50%, and this is going to get a little technical, 50% of the diameter, every sprinkler head in the world, whether it's on an athletic field or somebody's house or a golf course, ideally is spaced at 50% of the diameter, or the radius, or in another way of putting it, it's the length of the spray, and so they do this, and that gives you even distribution. What I do with most of my projects in Texas is space at 45%, and that fights the wind. You'll never beat it, but it fights it, and it helps, and that's what we'll do here. It will make them a lot less, you'll have a lot fewer donut holes than you do, and it'll look a lot more like Tierra Santa. The other major thing that I'll do with irrigation system is specify HDPE pipe, high-density polyethylene. What you have now and what a lot of people have, most athletic fields, most houses, commercial things have PVC, and most old golf course systems are PVC. I've been specifying HDPE pipe for the last eight or nine, 10 years, and it's been in use in this country for about 20 or 25. It does not leak, and what they're faced with right now, if you all have been to the golf course, you've seen leak after leak after leak after leak with the PVC irrigation system. HDPE pipe is fused, it's heat fused, so it actually becomes one piece of pipe in the entire golf course. The manufacturers guarantee it for at least 25 years, some 25, some 30, and the Plastic Pipe Institute of America says it should last anywhere from 50 to 100 years. It doesn't leak. That saves you water, it saves you energy, and it makes your irrigation system a lot more efficient. I don't really need to add a whole lot else to that, I don't think. It's going to be automatic, of course, it'll be computer controlled.
I have a question on HDPE. Is it fused at the site?
Yes.
Or does it come on a roll?
Both, actually. It comes in, depending on the size of the pipe, the bigger pipe comes in lengths, but the smaller pipe, like two and three inch, comes in reels. Some of them is 1,200 feet, 2,000 feet, depending on what the truck can handle, and it is heat fused onsite. It's fascinating to watch. You'll have a fuser, and to operate the fuser, you'll actually have a gas-powered generator, and there are settings depending on the pipe specs and the size of the pipe, and that governs what the temperature is and how long you fuse it, but it's done onsite.
Yeah, I understand. It's like ribbon rail on the Class A railroad.
Yeah, it's been used in the gas industry for many, many years.
Sir, may I ask a question? Does Wesaco, the slide you showed before, do they use that pipe?
It wasn't common back in 1987 or anything.
Okay. Is anybody here in Texas using that that we can?
I've done, the last three projects that I've done, we've done it. Laredo Country Club, we did it in 2013. It's HDPE pipe. Carrizo Springs, which is 80 miles north of Laredo, HDPE, and one I did last year way out in west Texas in Kermit, 50 miles west of Odessa, also has HDPE. I can give you the numbers of those people, and you can call them if you want to.
Maybe to Gabe would be one thing. The cost difference between PVC pipe and this particular process you're talking about, is it double the cost, 40% more?
No, that's a very good question, in fact. There used to be a greater disparity than there is now. It's almost the same, but the difference is the installation of HDPE pipe is much more efficient because you have to connect PVC pipe every 20 feet.
Right.
With this, you can do a whole fairway.
So, you actually save on the labor and the material.
Absolutely, and it's a faster installation, too.
Understood, okay.
Yeah, good question.
Any more on that? We might be, you know, overreacting to your three leaks a day that you have out there, but, you know, our goal is to be, when your great-grandkids are sitting in your chairs there, you know, they might have to worry about the irrigation system fixing it again. We've always found that just better to use the highest quality materials, and again, to answer your question, it used to be a 10% difference overall. That's narrowing as more contractors get qualified to install it, and actually, one of the things we always do is we bid to the highest and best, and we'll probably bid to three, what we think will be 3.5 million, just hoping to get a good bid from a qualified contractor, and we will have alternate deductive bids. So, for some reason, it's a $40,000 or $50,000 deductible. We may leave that option open to go back to PVC, but we don't recommend.
Okay, so I have a question on the pump stations. Did you evaluate the pump stations as far as, did you test the equipment and recommend the motor maybe need to be replaced or not, or you simply given a cost to redo it all completely and just hoping that it works? I mean, can you provide an estimate on actually testing the equipment because you don't want to open up and three months later have a problem with the pump if we didn't?
Yeah, well, we haven't done that. You know, that's a question we will answer very soon in the design process. We don't guess at anything. We don't guess at whether your drain pipe under the surface is, you know, has integrity. We're not going to guess at the sand mixes we'll see here that goes in the green or the bunker, so we have not done that yet, but we wouldn't, because I understand. I mean, it's the heartbeat of the system, and there's no sense, you know, getting a new system.
Now, I have a question on the maintenance, and your suggestion on whether we should or not, but, you know, there are chemicals out there that we can apply to the grass that'll help keep the absorption rate, you know.
Right, wetting agents.
Right, exactly. Insecticides, and I don't think we're doing that currently. Do you suggest we do something like that, or the golf courses that you do, done, have they done that in the past, or? I just want to, what a question I'm asking. There's stuff that we're doing on the maintenance side, that there's equipment out there or treatments that we can do that'll enhance the greenery or whatnot, and I think you know where I'm going with that. So, can you provide guidance on that, whether we're doing something proper or not?
Give me about four more images, and I think I'll answer that question for you, if that's all right.
Right.
And by the way, this is an example, city of North Ridge and Hills, Texas. Again, we did everything that Ben was telling you. We went from two rows to three rows on the irrigation. We made sure we covered the area between the cart path and the fairways because a lot of areas you have not grown. It's a combination of the traffic and poor irrigation. Now, drainage, it's easy to show you on a slide, you know, your problems. It's a little harder to describe solutions, especially at Tony Butler, because you've got three or four different kinds of drainage problems to solve, but I'll tell you a story, tell you two stories. One is Golf Week magazine called me the drainage nerd of golf course architects. This project was pretty well made for me to do with your drainage problems. Secondly, I came in yesterday, I reevaluated the course just to jog my memory, ran into one of your golfers, he asked why I'm out there without any clubs, so I tell him I'm one of three candidates, you know, to do this project. So, his response is, well, they ought to hire the guy who designed Tierra Santa. He was there last week, last month, two-inch rainstorm, and it was back in play in an hour, and we think we can do that with Tony Butler. I mean, some of your problems are fairly simple. This is the little swamp in front of AT&T. I mean, the lower photo shows you the proper relationship between, you know, lake and fairway. We're either going to have to raise that portion and a few others that far above the water table, or we're going to have to find a way to lower the lake. In other areas, I think we'll be able to drop catch basins in strategic places. In other areas, like 11 Fairway, you've got a big drainage ditch across, we're going to have to put bigger pipe in and go. Greens, of course, big thing. Upper left is USGA Construction, very expensive. I don't think it's going to be great value for you. Most of the greens we've built over the years are the upper right, it's called California Greens, which is just sand and maybe, you know, 10% peat. And then the lower one is something we've done successfully. It's used more often for tees, which get beat up, too, and that's called the modern push-up green, where you put in four inches of sand over good topsoil. But I'm getting to think that maybe the cost of trucking in the good topsoil is not going to be any less than trucking in the 12 inches of sand for the California green, but that's how we're planning on improving your greens and enlarging them without spending, you know, breaking the bank. To answer your question, on our team is Mr. Terry Bukin. If you read the proposal, you know, I'm not going to go over too much, but he's a master greenskeeper in Britain and here. He has prepared courses for US Opens and PGA Championships. He has grown in 100 golf courses, and we envision his role to extend beyond construction. So many times, we've seen with municipalities, the architect leaves, the contractor leaves, and the superintendent, who may or may not have a grow-in experience, is left with a big, big job. No one's grown in more courses than Terry around the world, and I don't want to leave the impression that, you know, he only does high-end stuff. Again, he's worked with me in Indonesia and places with almost no resources and helped them bring their turf up. And the wetting agents, the questions, he will develop a total agronomy program for you. I know that you've had some discussion about leasing your equipment. He has done leasing plans and equipment replacement plans for maintenance, and like I say, to me, he's the secret sauce, I think, that makes our team the best because we know we don't look good unless you look good, and I just know from experience that he's going to make us all look good. Bunkers, I mean, they're even overtaking tees and golfers' hearts and minds is the next thing they want to see. We are going to take your bunkers, you know, right now, they're called more mud bunkers and sad muckers. We're going to add a liner between the mud and the sand to keep it cleaner. Whether it's a hard surface on the right or a cloth liner on the left, we prefer the hard surfaces if they're not too much more expensive. And while we're at it, we're going to improve the character of those bunkers. For some reason, everybody or whoever built these built the front of the bunkers up as high as the back. I mean, they need to tip, like this table right here, they need to tip at you if you're going to see the bunkers. They're just, I don't know who built them, they're poorly designed. So, as long as we're in there working them, we're going to try to give them a little more character. I don't think we necessarily add bunkers because they are expensive to build and maintain. Again, go back to Tierra Santa, the grass bunkers and the shadow patterns, and maybe fairway chipping areas and mounds. There's a lot of things we can do without overbunkering your golf course to improve its image with golfers. The other thing we plan to do, and we know this is really phase one, and you've got, you know, maybe the other, the third nine, someday, your cart path, your pump station, you know, those are going to wear out, and we're going to plan ahead for all of that so that when it comes time to replace those cart paths, there's a logical plan to incorporate them in. A lot of times on flat ground, they build a cart path, and it blocks up more drainage than, you know, the problems itself.
You've got two minutes.
All right, well, let me talk faster. Well, I'm almost done. That's, those are the highlights of the deal. Tony Butler has got a great history. You know, it's got good bones, and, you know, I was pleasantly surprised after two years to come back, and just remember, there's lots of good holes out here. It doesn't need like major design overhaul, it needs tweaks. The valley is used so well on hole six and 10, and again, we look forward to continuing our relationship with Harlingen. I see a lot of potential to make Tony Butler, you know, one of the best courses in the valley, if not farther. So, thank you for the opportunity, and do we have any other questions?
Anybody have any other questions? All right, well, thank you all very much for being here and for submitting that proposal.
Thank you. Bye.
Javier?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ross is the next one.
Who is it?
Brian Ross is the next one.
Ross, okay.
All right. All right, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to start off, thank Mayor Boswell, city commissioners, thank you guys for having me here today, present my team's case for the Tony Butler Golf Course Renovation Project. My name is Brian Ross. I'm the president and owner of Ross Golf Design. We're a full-service golf course design company based in Austin, Texas, and I'm joined here today by a member of my team, my irrigation specialist, Ben McCambe from Laguna Vista. So, over the next 10 minutes, I'm going to talk a little bit about Tony Butler Golf Course, what makes it special and deserving of this investment, and why I think my team and I are the best choice for you guys to lead this project. Okay. So, golf at Tony Butler dates back to 1929. That's 92 years ago. The original architect was John Breedmas. Breedmas worked primarily in Texas during the early 20th century, and he was responsible for some other pretty historic courses across our state, like Colonial Country Club in Fort Worth and Memorial Park in Houston. So, here's an aerial from January 1947. It's the earliest one I could find, and as you can see on the aerial there, the golf course really took up the northern portion of the property that exists today, and, you know, generally, holes not being 227, then one, nine, 10, 11, 18. Then during the mid 1950s, they expanded the course to the south a little bit, and they reconfigured it a bit, and that makes up the land generally around holes 3, 8, and 17. And then finally, 1973, the course was expanded again, and they added the large triangular piece on the southern end of the property. Generally encompasses holes four through seven, 12 through 16, and of course, 1973 is also when the golf course was renamed Tony Butler Golf Course. And then finally, here you have Tony Butler Golf Course today, and this was the image from February of this year. Now, I've played Tony Butler twice in the last few years in anticipation of this project, so I have a few thoughts I'd like to offer on the golf course and ways I think we could improve it. I'll start with a quote from the father of golf architecture in America. His name's Charles Blair McDonald. Putting greens to a golf course are what the face is to a portrait. Greens are the lifeblood of a golf course. They can overcome a poor routing, and great greens can overcome a featureless site. Now, fortunately, Tony Butler is neither of those. It's a really enjoyable property, and it's good routing, but I'd rank the greens here well below average when compared to the hundreds of other golf courses I've seen and studied. The greens are quite small. I did a quick analysis, and the average size of the putting greens at Tony Butler right now is 3,850 square feet, which is over 2,000 square feet smaller than the industry average of 6,000 square feet. Now, that's part of the charm of Tony Butler, but it also has some challenges. So, small greens limit where you can place the pin, meaning you don't have a lot of difference in the day-to-day setup of the course, and they can also lead to compaction issues as golfers gather around the same places on the green day-to-day. Now, Tony Butler doesn't need to have the biggest set of greens in the world, but I will seek to expand the size of the greens to help produce more strategy, more enjoyment, and more variety for the golfers of Harlingen. So, Tony Butler has 24 sand bunkers and totals just over about a half acre of sand, and in my opinion, this is a pretty good place to be as a municipal golf course, so I wouldn't seek to increase either the number of bunkers or the acreage by much, but I will take a hard, long look at each of those bunkers to make sure they make sense from a strategic and from a maintenance perspective. Many of the bunkers seem disconnected from the golf hole, which may mean you have a fairway bunker that's just a little too far off the fairway, or some of the greenside bunkers seem just a little too far away from the green. Many of the bunkers also lack visibility in many instances, and they tend to exist more like a saucer. That makes access difficult for both golfers and for your maintenance staff. So, if hired, we would rebuild each bunker to ensure it's more visible, easier to maintain, and it exists to reward a great shot, not just penalize a poor one. And then lastly, let's talk briefly about tees. So, tee square footage is quite limited on many holes. The blue and white tees tend to have more tee space, and the gold and red tees tend to be on very small tee boxes. And there are also some questions about equity for senior women and junior golfers. At only 6,320 yards, Tony Butler is not a long golf course by any means, but from the red tees at 5118, that's a pretty, that's a pretty long golf course for women. I'd like to see that set of four tees somewhere in the 42 to 4,500 yard range, so I'll work to provide adequate areas for these tees so that they don't come off as just an afterthought. And then I'd also like to see a set of junior tees added up in the fairway as well. Okay, so, we have a pretty good understanding of the golf course now. Let's get to the important part. Why should you, the city of Harlingen, hire me and my team to guide you through this project? The answer's quite simple, in my opinion. My team and I are going to provide you with a level of attention that's unparalleled in this industry. A multimillion-dollar golf course project is a complex operation. There's a lot of moving pieces, especially when you have irrigation system being installed as well as golf course features being built. And you know what the most important lesson I've learned from all my years in golf course design and construction is? It's that you just have to be there. That's why I've built my business and this team to ensure that we're there when needed and not just for a day or two here and there. We'll spend more time onsite during both the design and construction than anyone else in this industry. That's a commitment that I make to every client, and that's a commitment that I make to you all today. This process will start on day one. Oops, sorry. Immediately after the contract is signed, I'll arrange to spend seven to 10 days onsite, completing a thorough analysis of the golf course. I'll get to know both the property and the people charged with its upkeep. I'll walk each hole, identifying each golf course feature, each tree, every irrigation head, so that I understand this place backwards and forwards. I'll spend a significant portion of my time observing golfers and how they play the golf course. We'll develop a thorough understanding of not only where golfers do hit their golf ball, but where they don't. My team and I will complete course walkthroughs with all relevant ownership, operations, and maintenance personnel. These walks are intended to be candid conversations, and the main priority being that we want to align the priorities of everyone prior to starting the design phase. We want to get everyone's opinion. We'll also use this time to begin creation of a base map. We'll stake features using GPS and establish a topographically accurate depiction of the property. During the design development phase, we'll work hand-in-hand with you guys to establish a project budget that can meet all the goals set forth in the discovery phase. Every decision made from that point forward will be with this budget in mind. We'll pour over the details. We want to try to maximize the size of the features we can build, and we want to maximize the coverage that we can get on our new irrigation system, but all of that must be dumped in the constraints of that budget. Our agronomist is one of the most respected men in the Texas turf industry. From day one, he'll work alongside your superintendent and staff to ensure that we're putting them in the best possible position to grow turf grass in this area. We'll also establish a great, accurate 3D computer model of the proposed course during this phase. You can see here, it's just a little quick rendering I threw together, what a potential before and after on the sixth hole could look like. These models are great for conveying ideas that can sometimes be hard to pick up from a 2D plan, and this will help show all the stakeholders, you guys, residents of the city, what the vision for the proposed golf course is. Once all parties are satisfied that we've developed a plan as thoroughly as possible, we'll move into construction documents. My team and I will produce a construction document, technical specification bid set that's as thorough as anyone in this business, and these documents will be the first thing referenced when a question arises during construction. We'll personally walk the city through the bid process, ensuring that only the most highly regarded and competent golf course and irrigation contractors are able to bid on your project. Once construction begins, our team gets even stronger. My company will provide the city with a golf course shaper to handle the layout and construction of all golf course features. Think things like greens, tees, bunkers. Our shaper will be your eyes and ears on the ground, and they'll work hand-in-hand with the contractor and the golf course superintendent on a daily basis to ensure that we're staying on time and on budget. I will personally be onsite for a minimum of two days per week, every week, and often much more. For example, I would plan to be onsite for the first three weeks of the project at a minimum to ensure that we get off the ground running, and I'll spend similar longer visits during other critical periods. In addition, I will personally finish shape every green to ensure they're built exactly as intended. A typical irrigation designer might make four or five visits to a site during construction. They're going to lay out their grid, inspect the work that's been done, GPS installation of heads and pipe. Our local irrigation specialists will be onsite weekly to ensure that the project is up to our highest standards and that the system has been installed as intended. Once construction is over and the grow-in is commenced, we don't just disappear either. My agronomist, irrigation team, and myself will be onsite frequently during grow-in. We'll help answer any questions, ensure your superintendent's comfortable with his new course and the new irrigation system he's been handed. If you hire me and my team, you're signing me up for a lifetime commitment to you and your golf course. I'll do everything in my power to make sure this project is a success, and that Tony Butler is around for 92 more years for the golfers of Harlingen to enjoy. So, with that, I'd like to thank you again for your time. Thank you.
All right, does anybody have any questions? Do you have any projects under, currently underway?
I'm finishing a project right now in Kentucky that's been, really for the last year and a half, is a total rebuild, very similar to this project, in fact, all new greens, tees, bunkers, reggrass, the pole plays, new irrigation system. I'll do everything in my power to make sure this project is a success and that Tony Butler is around for 92 more years for the golfers of Harlingen to enjoy. So with that, I'd like to thank you again for your time. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Do you have any projects currently underway?
I'm finishing a project right now in Kentucky that's been, really for the last year and a half, is a total rebuild, very similar to this project, in fact, all new greens, tees, bunkers, regrass, the pole plays, new irrigation system. We've basically wrapped up construction on that. I've got one more visit to make, and then we'll be done.
Have you encountered increased construction costs?
Yes. Construction costs have gone up. I think the primary thing that we've seen is in trucking and materials. We've had a, not a difficult time necessarily getting them, but there seem to be fewer drivers available to bring materials, and that's, so, you know, the drivers that are available are at a higher rate than they have been.
Where in Kentucky?
It's in Park City, Kentucky, which is south-central, just near Boilin Green. Okay. Yeah, right by Mammoth Cave.
Sir, I appreciate your presentation is very detailed.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate the level of detail you provided.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Ross? All right. Thanks a lot for being here. We appreciate you coming down to make the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we've got Mr. Jeffrey Bloom.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor. Glad to be here. I'm going to go through this fairly quick because I know in the interest of time, we need to get through it. So, see if I can get this thing working right. My name's Jeff Bloom. I'm an architect out of Houston. I'll go through this, like I say, real fast. First I'm going to do is introduce our team, the members of our team. I think we've got a pretty interesting team and some guys who have a whole lot of experience with the golf course out at Tony Butler. We'll show a little bit about some representative projects that we have and that we've done in the past, a real brief discussion of our design process, some of the specifics about Tony Butler, and then just some real quick before-after photos to finish up the presentation. So first, I'll just talk a little bit about myself. I've been a golf course architect for 32 years with new course, renovations, master planning, all of those things. Been a member of the American Society of Golf Course Architects since 2006, was on the executive committee for five years, and president of the organization in 2018 and 19. Was on the board of governors from 13 to 20, and was a representative for ASGCA with the USGA Pace of Play Initiative, which is pretty important when you start talking about municipal golf. Was a member of the Houston Golf Association for nearly 20 years, and the tournament general chairman of the Shell Houston Open in 2009 and 10. Been a member of the South Texas Golf Course Superintendents Association, and then with the USGA, was on their construction education committee, the greens section Pace of Play Committee, and have presented at their innovation symposiums multiple times. And now I'm going to let Ben, real quick, our irrigation designer, talk, and then I'll get back up and follow up after that.
Thanks, Jeff. As this mentioned, I've mentioned before, I'm in an interesting situation where I'm on all three teams, but it, but it makes perfect sense.
Who do you recommend?
I'm sorry?
Who do you recommend?
I was just going to say, just going to say, I am the constant in this equation, and I'm remaining neutral because I have confidence in all three of these gentlemen. But the next nearest irrigation designer, I think, is about 600, about 400 miles away up in East Texas. And so it's, I know the golf course. I've been playing it for 40 years. I want to see golf succeed in the city of Harlingen. I think you've got a wonderful golf course. I've always liked it, and I want to do whatever I can do to make sure that it stays green and it stays consistently green. And that, of what I mentioned a little bit earlier, we will space a little bit narrower than is the industry standard because of the wind. And secondly, we'll use HDPE pipe, which does not leak. And like I said, I'm 30 miles away from the golf course. One thing, the bottom thing, certified irrigation designer, I carried that certification for 20 years as certified golf irrigation designer, certified golf irrigation auditor, which gives a test to the distribution efficiency of the sprinkler heads. That's why you see those circles that we saw earlier. And also was a commercial, certified commercial irrigation designer, anyway. And a member of the Texas Turf Grass Association for a long time. I will hand it.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
In all three designs, you think, so you're the constant, did your design change in any one of them?
Yes, it will. Every architect has preferences in whether they like two-row, three-row, whether they like things that are spaced at, say, 60 feet or 70 feet, whether they like, around the greens, lots of times we will do what's called in-and-outs, ins-and-outs. Ins mean you have four sprinkler heads usually, that water only the green, and the outs water the outside. That usually takes about eight heads. Some golf course projects, and this will be part of the budget consideration when we look at that, because you can do it with only four heads and just water the green and the surround at the same time. That's not quite as efficient use, as efficient use of water as having both of them because you can't control the outside, and the greens need a little bit more water than the surround does.
Okay. So I guess that the question is, let me rephrase my question. You're doing irrigation. I know that the design layout may be different, but the process will be the same.
Absolutely.
It's just where the architect wants to put the water? Is that the difference? Or is there a big difference in scope of work between the three projects as you're providing them?
There wouldn't be much difference. And there's also not a whole lot of difference in individual architects' tastes. There's a little bit, but there's not a whole lot. Because the basic principles of irrigation, like I mentioned, you need to have at least head-to-head spacing, and we're going to do it a little bit narrower than that. Well, that narrows your options of how you're going to design, because you want to, you want to put all the sprinkler heads at that spacing if you can, and you can. And so there won't be much variance between the tastes of the three architects.
All right. Thanks.
Okay. Go through, I've got a couple other gentlemen here who are born and bred in Harlingen, Texas. Renee Rangel here. Renee and I have done multiple projects together over the years. Renee's a Harlington High graduate, Harlingen High graduate, 1988, a 20-year Class A member of the PGA, was golf letterman at the University of Houston. He's the current CEO of Sterling Golf Management. And he and I, as I said, have done five projects together. The Mallard Cove, or the Mallard Golf Club at the bottom there in Lake Charles, we just opened on Friday, which is a municipal golf course. Obviously Liberty is, and the Golf Club at Texas A&amp;M is a government-run golf course as well. So that's Renee. And then Roman Robledo. Roman is Renee's nephew, also born and raised in Harlingen, a very successful player down here. University of Houston golf letterman, 2011 to 2015, was an All-American in '14, U.S. amateur quarterfinalist in '14, U.S. Open qualifier in '17. Renee was also a U.S. Open qualifier in 1998. And both of these gentlemen learned to play at Tony Butler. And so when we started looking at this project from a design perspective, Renee and I, having had a relationship for many years, I thought it was perfect to bring them in. They're going to know the golf course, along with Ben, better than anybody. And so as we go through and go through our design process, they're going to have great input on that. Renee will also have a very big role in the project management side of things. So we think we bring a very local flair with our team. So that's our team, some of our experience. Just go through this real quick. These are some of our new courses. The ones I've got in red there are ones we did with Renee. And the Grand Pines Golf Club up in Montgomery, Texas, one I'd mentioned, was the number-two course in Houston the year it opened. So we've had a lot of experience, some of it international as well. Some renovation experience. Again, Golf Crest Country Club, where Renee currently offices, is one that we worked on together. Boiling Springs Golf Club in Woodward, Oklahoma is another municipal golf course that was one of Golf Digest's Best New in 2014. And the Texas A&amp;M Golf Course that we did was Best New in 2013. And then this, some of the stuff we're working on right now. We do an awful lot of work for the Municipal Golf Association of San Antonio. We're just finishing up Almost Basin Golf Course up there. It will open in the beginning of November. We're getting ready to do the bunkers at Brackenridge Park, if you're familiar with that. That project will start in another month or so. We're still working on the Liberty Municipal Golf Course, the Falls in New Ulm, Texas, and then Wood Forest, which is north of Houston. These are some of the awards we've had over the years. Quail Valley Golf Course was one that was a municipal golf course on a site that was actually taken through eminent domain by the city of Missouri City in 2010, really turned that community around. The Bentwater Project I talked about. And then we've also written a lot on golf course design. If you wanted to go to our website and read some of that, we've done multiple articles in different countries. So our design philosophy, just quickly, we believe that golf architecture is a delicate balance between engineering and artistry. We've got to give the player a varied and inspirational tactical challenge. We've got to surround them with beauty. We've got to enable the operator to provide high-quality conditioning with an economically viable budget. That's particularly important when you talk about city work. And leave a minimal footprint on the surrounding environment. We're very concerned about that as well. Variety is the foundation of any good golf course. Tactical variety relates to distance, trajectory, and turn, visual variety in what you see, directional variety, how the holes play, and then topographic relief, which, and variety, which actually at Tony Butler, there's some good topo to work with. So it's an exciting palette to work on. Hazard placement should describe the player how to play the hole, but it should be interesting but not overly difficult. Difficulty should arrive in peaks and valleys on the golf course so you don't get six holes in a row that are brutal. Create an enjoyable experience for players is the overriding goal. In today's market, creating flexibility within the course footprint so you can set things up and run things, events in a different way, is very important. And then every great golf course is 18 varied tactical examinations and aesthetics that mold into one comprehensive course. So that's our philosophy. Real quick, some of the Tony Butler specifics. As I said, our team has more familiarity with Tony Butler than anybody you're considering, mainly because of the guys that we have on the team. They're all Harlingen and South Texas guys and play the golf course on a regular basis. Because our team is Texas-based, we don't charge expenses if we're within the state, even though it is five hours to get down here, but it's not that hard to get down here. Our team has completed multiple municipal commissions together in the recent past. I myself have probably done more municipal work in Texas than any other architect. Renee Rangel and Sterling Golf bring a wealth of golf course operation, grow-in, and opening experience that can be very beneficial to the project in terms of providing good information as you start to go through those processes. And then, as I said, we've completed a lot of municipal work. Some other ones real quick. Although the project is only specified as 18 holes, we're going to look at that entire property. We know there was another nine holes. We talked with Renee and Roman about that. And what might be the best use of that property? It could be the third nine. Maybe there's something else we can do with it that can drive revenues for the facility a little bit better. We did a project in San Antonio that is a nine-hole lighted par three out of the eight properties the Municipal Golf Association runs. It's the second-leading revenue producer of all of them. So we might want to look at something like that. All the design work will permit future expansion of the facility, depending on what you want to do with that property. Ben and I talked about that in our discussions. The maintenance and operational recommendations that we'll make to the city of Harlingen, again, will come a lot through Renee and the Sterling Golf Team to help you get ready for grow-in and preparation. And they'll be working with your superintendent and your pro to help you get through that process. That's something we can offer. All work will be done with USGA guidelines, and the design work will include conceptual planning, construction documentation, bid administration, review, and the construction observation as well. And just real quick, I want to show you a few examples of our work. This is the property over in Lake Charles, Louisiana, called Mallard Golf Club. It's brand-new. That's the third hole. The eighth hole, they're getting ready for opening. Like I said, it opened on Friday. Dead flat piece of property, but it's not flat anymore. We put quite a bit of contour into it. This is just another aerial view of the back nine, and this is holes four and five. So it's more of a Scottish Link-style golf course over there. Very quickly, these are some before and afters, just to give you a flavor of what renovations may look like, what we start with and what we end with. This is a project that Renee and I did together in Houston called Sterling Country Club. That's what it looked like in 2010. We did the work in 2011, and that's what that golf hole looks like today. Lady Bird Johnson, some of y'all may be familiar with Fredericksburg. This is one we did in 2012. This was their old ninth hole. Again, just kind of flat saucepan bunkers with that much character to them. That's what that golf hole looks like today. Rockwall Golf Athletic Club up on Lake Ray Hubbard in Dallas. This was one that had kind of been abandoned. That was their old 12th hole. That's what the 12th hole looks like today. And then Boiling Springs, this is one that was an award winner. It's up in a sand dune formation in Woodward, Oklahoma, another municipal golf course. Kind of had gotten into disrepair, but just a magnificent piece of property. That's what it had gotten to. This is what it looks like today. And just a couple more. Here's another one of Boiling Springs. This is their seventh hole. That's the seventh hole today. Lake Charles Country Club, very quickly. This was a hole we actually designed originally, came back and redesigned it to make it a little more maintenance-friendly. That's what that hole looks like today. The finishing hole's a double green. That's what it used to look like. This is what we turned it into. And then the campus course at A&amp;M, which is a project that Renee and I worked together on, dear, dear to my heart, because I'm an Aggie, this is what it used to look like. These photos are a little old. Kyle Field looks a little different these days. That's their 18th hole. And then their finishing hole on the other side, the ninth hole, those are the south-side dorms. And that's what that hole looks like today. So with that, I'll go ahead and be happy to answer any questions, or Renee, and Roman, and Ben as well. That's the sixth hole.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bloom?
Agronomy?
Yes.
Agronomy?
Agronomy. Renee's team is fantastic with agronomy. They have grown in multiple courses of mine, and they can provide a wonderful expertise in that regard. You want to say anything?
Sure. Yeah, we have our standards that we would pass on, obviously, to the project. Our goal is to have, provide the best golf course conditions for the best price. We work with the city of Panorama, as Jeff mentioned, city of Lake Charles. We understand budgets. We understand that we've got to keep it at a minimum of expenditures on the golf course so the golf course can hold its own financially. But we start with the greens. Greens are, at all our properties, are some of the best around Houston and Lake Charles, and that's what we go about. And we have great practice. We have a great team of agronomists that will put together, schedule a program for Tony Butler.
I think one thing that's important to mention on that regard, too, is that we're not trying to come in and change how you manage your facility. We're just providing expertise in that regard, and that's how we can assist the project in another way.
Okay. Anybody have any, anybody on the commission have any other questions? Tell us about what you're encountering with regard to construction cost increases.
So we've had a number of projects that have gone out to construction bids here recently. City of Liberty being one. That one was just right before the supply chain problems started to be encountered. What we have found, so cost-wise, we didn't see a big change there. We have seen some sense. I think the price of oil has something to do with it, too. You're putting a lot of plastic in the ground with pipe and irrigation heads and things like that. Costs a little more to take those in. But in terms of the biggest impact, it's probably more being able to get the materials that you need on time. It can be very difficult. Irrigation, for example, they will not guarantee prices more than about three or four days out right now, if that.
Sir, may I ask the time of the scope of work?
I'm sorry?
The time from start to completion on the project?
It really depends on what exactly you decide to do in its entirety. But typically, what we will see on what was put into the RFP with the irrigation and with the greens and bunkers and things like that, you're probably looking at somewhere between six to eight months.
So having known that, because I understand the supply chain problem, but I think given enough events notice, you're able to preorder and limit the obstacles I think you may have, right? Because the thing with construction is everybody needs it right now because they're building a house, they're building something. This is a laid-out process, right? So if you know from day one what materials you're going to need, you lay it out, and you, you know, you get it ordered, right?
Yeah.
It is the delay of time.
Right.
And as one gentleman answered, it absolutely is. You know, there's, in the restaurant business, there's warehouses of people, they have the product, they just can't ship it, they don't have no drivers.
Right.
They can't fill it fast enough.
Right.
So, but I think, I don't think, I don't foresee that as a problem very much because of the length of time, the scope of work, and that's why I was asking.
Yeah. So what I would tell you, and you're correct there, what I would tell you is that, you know, you're going to go through a bid process to select a contractor. When that bid is accepted, that contractor has told you what those prices are going to be.